Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum for the 2022 primary election season. I am Sabrina Taylor, the current president of the local St. Lucie League. Just a few quick reminders and important information before we get started. And thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules this evening to spend time with us. So the League of Women Voters website, if you're interested in visiting us, and we encourage you to do so, at www.lwvslc.org. The Supervision Elections Office of St. Lucie County, where you certainly can get all things political, is www.slcelections.com. Early voting starts August 13th and ends on August 20th. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And of course, primary election day is August 23rd. The hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And one thing you want to be aware of for this election year is a photo and signature identification will be required. Early voting locations, there are six. Four in Port St. Lucie and two in Fort Pierce. So beginning with the Paula A. Lewis Library located at 2950 Southwest Rosser Boulevard in Port St. Lucie. The Port St. Lucie Community Center located at 2195 Southeast Aroso Boulevard. The Mid-Florida Credit Union Event Center, also known as the Civic Center. The address is 9221 Southeast Event Center Place. And the fourth Port St. Lucie location is the Indian River State College Veterans Center of Excellence, also known as the Pruitt Campus. This is a new location. The address is 500 Northwest California Boulevard. And the two Fort Pierce locations are Zora Neale Hurston Library, 3008 Avenue D. And of course, Renaissance Business Park, formerly known as Orange Blossom Business Center, 4132 Okeechobee Road, again, and Fort Pierce. Before I move on to the purpose of us being with you, and again, thank you for your time. The League has also, is also offering a nice feature for the voter. It's entitled Vote 411. The website is www.vote411.org. It's a really nice feature. It is free to the public. And why is it a nice feature? Because once you go on, you can just input your address, and it will customize all those candidates in which you will be making a selection to represent you and your interests. So again, Vote 411. We encourage you to check it out. Vote411.org. Now on to the forum. So tonight, we were here from candidates vying for the office of County Commissioner, District 4. This will be the two Republican candidates. The Democratic candidates will certainly meet one of these ladies for the general election. The format for tonight's forum will consist a 90-second introduction by each candidate, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will also have two minutes to answer each question and a two-minute closing statement towards the end of this forum. The order of candidates was randomly selected prior to our start. Also know that this is not a debate. And so candidates will make their statements, and we will then move on to the next candidate or question. Lastly, candidates will be alerted at the 32nd mark and again, when their time is up. Our moderator tonight is none other than Carol Wyatt. Carol is the co-owner and operator of local radio stations WPSL in Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. Carol is also the president of WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County. She is the past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and also a member of Port St. Lucie Businesswomen. Carol also has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We at the League are so honored to have her as our candidate for moderator, yet for another fantastic year. And now, I turn it over to you, Carol.
Well, thank you, Sabrina. And as always, we thank the members of the League for developing the questions for this evening's forum. We thank the candidates for participating. And we thank you for listening, for watching, for informing yourselves about the upcoming election. Tonight, St. Lucie County Commission, District 4, which covers kind of the central part of the county. It's a term of four years. It is a countywide race, and it is a partisan race. Frannie Hutchinson, who held the office for the last 12 years, is not running for reelection. In November, Democrat Helen Lurie will face the Republican chosen in this August primary. So let's meet our two candidates, Jamie Lee Fowler and Martha Hornsby. We'll go to opening statements, a minute and 30 seconds each, and we'll start with Martha Hornsby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martha Hornsby. I'm a candidate for St. Lucie County Commission, District 4. I'd like to thank the League for giving us this opportunity to participate in this forum tonight. My roots run deep in St. Lucie County. I've lived here since I was four years old. I have 30 years of government experience working with the Chief Financial Officer of the county. I've worked on finances. I've worked with budgets. I've handled payroll and insurance benefits for all the county employees. Also, I'm currently a substitute teacher with the St. Lucie County School District and treasurer for Midway Road Baptist Church. I also have a master's degree with the concentration in public administration. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to opening statement, minute 30 seconds. Jamie Lee Fowler.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Everyone watching on Facebook, thank you so much. My name is Jamie Lee Fowler, and I'm running for St. Lucie County Commission, District 4, to give us back a voice. I know so many other residents in the county feel the same as I do, as though we don't have a voice. Same small group of people are making all the decisions for us, and I want to put government back into our hands. I have been in this community for the past 23 years. Just like you, my family and I live, work, and play here. And in order to protect our unique quality of life, that's again why I want to put government back into our hands. I've been a small business manager for over 20 years. When I started at Tri-County, I started as a second shift dispatcher, working my way through the ranks, tackling one position after another. Today, I am the operations manager. The company initially had eight trucks and only operated in Fort Pierce. Today, I have brought that company to operate throughout the state of Florida. We have three locations across two counties, over 30 employees and 23 trucks. Along with my civic engagement, I am the chair for the Education Committee. I am part of the Fort Pierce Women's Club and the St. Lucie County Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, now we'll move to the questions. You'll have two minutes each to respond to each question, and we'll rotate who has the first, has each first shot at each question. So starting with Jamie Lee Fowler, what are your top three priorities for St. Lucie County should you be elected?
Absolutely. So I want to work on continuing to lower our taxes. I know our county commission did just set the ceiling at 3.499% or not percent, but lowered the mills 3.499. That's the ceiling, they said. It could potentially be less by September. But I want to further work on that by reducing wasteful spending, looking at the timing of projects, reducing the overlapping of services, and bonding projects. I want to focus more on our public safety with everyone moving into our county, both from South Florida and all over the country now, not just the Northeast like we're accustomed to. That's unfortunately going to bring an influx of crime. Currently, we're seeing soft crime, crimes of opportunity. Checks taken out of mailboxes, unlocked car thefts. So again, crimes of opportunity. And our roads, our roads are getting incredibly dangerous. So I want to work with our local law enforcement to make sure they have what we need as we grow. Additionally, I want to take a look at how we grow, make sure we grow responsibly and in a manner that's comfortable for the residents that have been here. We're a very unique county with a lot of new people coming in. Those people love it. They love the feel. But it's a little uncomfortable for the people that have been here 20, 30 years to see the expansive growth. So I want to see quality over quantity and make sure that if we are offering tax abatements to companies, that we are following up on the backend and make sure that they are meeting the requirements that we originally set to allow them those abatements and incentives.
Okay, same question to Martha Hornsby. Your top three priorities for the county should you be elected?
Okay, thank you. The main focus of mine is that we have a housing crisis in St. Lucie County right now. I worry about our young professionals who are trying to move here. They can't afford to buy a home. And now the rents are going so high, they can't afford to rent. I worry about our senior citizens who are living on a fixed income. Their property taxes are going up, their insurance is going up. Those that live in mobile home communities, their lot rents are going up. And so they're being priced out of the market. So what I would like to do is see us lower the millage rate and give relief back to the taxpayers. Now, I know the county recently lowered it, but we can lower it more. I'd like to see us lower it by cutting wasteful spending without cutting necessary services.
Okay, let's come back. Second question to Martha Hornsby. With the tremendous growth in St. Lucie County, what actions do you propose to ensure environmentally responsible development?
Well, we have to be careful. We do have a lot of growth. People have discovered St. Lucie County. They know it's, we're living in paradise. So everybody's moving here. We're getting an influx from the north. We're getting an influx from the south. But we have to be careful because we have to protect people's property rights. And if they want to develop a property, they have to be able to do that as long as they abide by the codes and ordinances that are already on the books and that they comply with the zoning laws. So as county commissioners, we can make sure that that's done and enforce that. And then hopefully, the growth will be balanced and will not negatively impact the residents that are here already.
For Jamie Lee Fowler, same question. How do you ensure environmentally responsible development?
Absolutely. So again, I think we need to look at, look at everything as a whole as we consider projects. A lot of the growth coming in from what I've seen so far is there's a lot of developers wanting to rezone properties. So that's something that we can look at. We could potentially, you know, just say, no, we're not going to rezone it to allow for that expansive growth, that high-density housing. I think our environment is incredibly important. I mean, I don't know about you, but that's one of the things that, you know, brought my family here to Florida is the beaches, the weather. Again, you know, this is paradise. I mean, we live where most people only vacation, and it's very important that we protect that. And again, you know, do so in a very responsible manner and definitely take our environment very serious.
Okay, expanding on something that was touched on earlier, Jamie Lee Fowler, property taxes in St. Lucie County continue to be high in comparison to other similar-sized areas. What will you do to continue to lower the tax burden on homeowners without reducing services?
Absolutely. So I kind of inadvertently spoke about that already. So I think, again, we can look at the timing of projects. Right now, we're facing a 40-year high of inflation. I think if it's not absolutely necessary for that project, let's consider postponing it until everything comes back down to normal levels. I can give you an example. Recently, we okayed $128,500 to be approved just for the design of landscaping on Midway Road. Two commissioners at that meeting kind of baffled at that cost, but it still got approved. You know, to their point, Midway Road already had landscaping. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Why are we spending so much, so much money on consulting fees? So that's wasteful spending. Let's put it off to, let's put it off. Let's see if we can get cheaper bids in. Bonding projects, locking in the price of that project, as we know, projects get more expensive as time goes on. If we use bonding, we can potentially lock that project and make it cheaper. And then the overlapping of services, one example, and I know everyone's probably so tired of hearing about humane society, but you know, that is an excellent example of overlapping services. You know, we have three different humane societies, which means, you know, all the taxpayers are paying for all those three different locations, duplication of, you know, employees running those. I think we spent $500,000 to $700,000 to buy that facility on Midway Road. So those are some examples of how we can save the taxpayers' money and ultimately bring down that millage rate as much as we can on our end, knowing property values are the responsibility of the property appraiser.
Okay, same question to Martha Hornsby. Lowering the tax burden on homeowners without reducing services.
Well, we're at a good spot right now in the county because the current budget was built on a 9% increase. But when the property appraiser presented the budget, it was a 17% increase. So we have extra money flowing into the general fund right now. And what I would propose is lower the millage rate, like they've already done, but we can lower it more without cutting necessary services. And I would like to also see, if possible, to put a moratorium on impact fees. That seems to be the biggest thing that's causing the taxpayers so much, you know, disincentive. And the contractors, if we could put a moratorium on the impact fees, they would have money to, more money to offset the cost of building, concrete, lumber. Everything's going up. Fuel costs are going up. And there's not a better time in our county than now, since we have all this extra money flowing into the general fund. I'd like to see us do that.
Okay, next question, starting with Martha Hornsby. What are your priorities for improving the county's infrastructure? And how will you capitalize on the funds available through the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed last year?
Well, I think the county's done a good job of partnering with the federal government, especially with Midway Road. I mean, it's a great expansion, and I know they're going further out west. So I would say just stay on the same track, partner with our state partners and our federal partners, and get as much money into the county so that it's not such a burden on the taxpayers.
Okay, for Jamie Lee Fowler, how would you capitalize on funds available through the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill?
Absolutely. So if I'm not mistaken, and I apologize because I'm digesting a lot of information in preparation, but I thought that had to do with essentially Wi-Fi access to internet for the most part. Is that not correct? Or is that actually?
I think there's more in it than that.
Okay. So I do know, just to touch on the technological side of it, I do know the county, we are actually offering basically free Wi-Fi. It's a partnership through the St. Lucie County education system. It's something that we're going to be able to have sustained for at least the next two years, offering almost free or limited internet access to families here on the Treasure Coast. As far as roadway infrastructure, as far as the west side of our county, I know the TPO, our transportation planning organization, has looked at adding additional roads to help us plan for our growth, which is definitely a smart thing to do. They're looking at putting in all the roadways and additional widening of existing roads prior to all that growth going in, which we know, of course, St. Lucie, we learned, you know, as it started as a bedroom community, never, we never imagined it would be what it was. And now we're seeing the struggle of where do we put in additional routes without the homes and everything in the way. So I think we need to do it before all that growth, all the growth goes vertical, is get those roads in ahead of time.
Okay, next question, starting with Jamie Lee Fowler. The Florida Legislature has recently passed bills that encroach upon powers of local government that have been protected by home rule. What steps will you take to address these new bills and limitations to the power of the county commission?
I definitely want to work with our county commissioners and our legislative affairs people to make sure that we maintain as much home rule as possible. The people right here on the grounds, here locally in the community, know best what should happen for its residents versus Tallahassee. So I will definitely fight and do everything I can to protect our home rule.
Okay, for Martha Hornsby, what steps would you take to address new bills and limitations to the power of the county commission?
I would like to see us, as county commissioners, I would like to see us strengthen our working relationships with the city council of Port St. Lucie and the commission, Fort Pierce Commission. And then as an entire body, we could all go to Tallahassee, you know, with one voice, and say that we would like to have as much home rule as we can because like, we were just told, the residents know best what they need in this county. And I would just like to see us strengthen our relationships with our legislature and with our co-cities representatives.
Next question for Martha Hornsby. It is hurricane season again. Hurricanes are projected to become increasingly more intense and frequent in the coming years. Are there ways to improve the county's preparedness for high-intensity hurricanes?
Well, I think we're fortunate that we haven't had a major hurricane recently, but our county has done a great, great job of getting our county prepared. I've taken tours at the emergency management center, and they're very well-prepared for a major hurricane if it should come. And I'm very proud of the job that they've done so far.
Okay, same question. Jamie Lee Fowler, how would you help improve the county's preparedness for high-intensity hurricanes?
Absolutely. Making sure that we have reserves to be able to handle natural disasters that we're used to, like hurricanes. I believe it was through our Treasure Coast delegation, and I believe Dana Trabulsi was able to set aside, work to get a fund set aside just for natural disasters here in the state of Florida. So that's been funded as of this year. So I think that would be something great to consider at our local level as well.
Okay, next question, coming back to Jamie Lee Fowler. St. Lucie County draws tourists from all over the world because of its environment and its waterways. But waterways are not healthy. Environment is threatened. The environment is threatened by constant development. What are your priorities for addressing the cleanliness of the waterways and ensuring our natural habitat?
Absolutely. So I definitely want to work to see how we can or what the best plan is to move septic to sewer, to get people backwards, sewer to septic. There you go. Because I do know that does, on top of obviously fertilizer, that is a huge part of our problem, as well as, you know, soil maintenance, making sure that everything flows correctly. One of the things that I was looking at that I found really interesting is there's several cities in Australia and then some here in the United States that actually have what they call like trash traps that go either on top of or set inside the gutter so that the stormwater, all of that debris doesn't wash down into it. And that's something I'd like to look at. I think it literally cost maybe $20,000 for the cost of the net, the design, the civil engineering. And over the course of four months, it kept almost 1,000 pounds of garbage out of their waterways. So I think that's something that we should definitely look at.
Okay, same question to Martha Hornsby. Priorities for addressing the cleanliness of the waterways and ensuring our natural habitat?
I think the quicker we can get residents from septic to sewer would be very beneficial for the county. The county utilities department has done a good job getting grants down to the county for residents that can't afford to switch over. And so I think that's a great program. I'd like to see us continue to do that. Residents in Lakewood Park cannot afford $14,000 to switch over from septic to sewer. So the county, I think I would support the county helping them or even getting more grants from the federal government, the state government, because that would be very beneficial for our waterways. And also enforcing the, you know, the fertilizer discharge into the river would be great. We have laws in place that need to, and they continue to need to be enforced to prevent that from happening.
Okay, next question from Martha Hornsby. St. Lucie County has an economy driven, at least in some part, by its tourism. What will you do to expand the business and job market of St. Lucie County to diversify that economy and ensure long-term sustainability that is not reliant on tourism?
Not relying on tourism? Okay. Yeah, as I said before, we're living in paradise. And St. Lucie County has been discovered. We've got people coming from the north and coming from the south. So our tourism market is very strong right now, and I would like to see that continue. I'm very pro-business. I think our small businesses are the backbone of this county. So I would like to see us promote our small businesses and help them with, you know, the permitting process has been streamlined through the county. They can now do a lot of things online. So anything to help our small businesses would be, would be very beneficial for the county.
Okay, so same question back to Jamie Lee Fowler. How would you diversify the economy, ensure long terms sustainability that is not so reliant on tourism?
Sure. So, you know, the EDC is our main driver in terms of getting, you know, new businesses here. I definitely want to, right now, we're kind of bringing in a lot of manufacturing jobs, which is wonderful. But I want to see us continue to diversify, to your point. Manufacturing, trucking, right, that's going to bring more traffic congestion. So I would like to see us, and I know that's a targeted industry, but I would like to see us broaden our base for what we're looking for, maybe, you know, tech companies, things of those natures, companies of that nature to, you know, better diversify us. As a small business manager for 23 years, I understand the challenges that our small businesses have. And knocking and going into businesses these past two weeks, I've heard of a lady that took eight months to get her business up. I heard of another that after a couple months, they just ended up pulling out. And that's disheartening because these are small businesses. And so I want to find a way to incentivize our small businesses. We incentivize, incentivize the big guys coming in. And I want to see what we can do to incentivize them. So maybe when Amazon and FedEx are coming in, maybe we can say, okay, you have to give 20% of your bill to local businesses here in St. Lucie County. There's definitely a way to help the little guy, which is definitely what drives our county. I mean, they've been here contributing, paying taxes, employing people. So we definitely owe them some service.
Okay, we have a question sent into us from our audience. I'll start with Jamie Lee Fowler. How would you work with the city of Fort Pierce to develop the sea and airports?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things we need to come together and definitely work together, our county and both cities, Fort Pierce and PSL. We have a lot of plans in the works for the airport. Our airport is going to be going commercial. They just, I believe, signed off on one of the companies. They just went through the RFP process three weeks ago, and have chosen a company that's going to take over the MRO hanger. It's a little, it's hard to swallow as someone that's been here a very long time. I know the airport is kind of stagnant, so to speak, and, you know, obviously, at some point, it was going to move forward. But, you know, there's going to be a lot of growth that that's going to bring, again, more people, more traffic. So I just, we need to just start working together. And that's not been happening so much. So just want to get with those commissioners and see what their thoughts are, see what our visions are, and see how we can come together and work collaboratively.
Okay, same question to Martha Hornsby. How would you work with the city of Fort Pierce to develop the sea and airports?
Well, the airport, I'm definitely in support of developing the airport. I think it's going to bring more businesses and more jobs to our county, which is going to help everyone. There's also a proposal with the county to move, if you think about our downtown area, it's like the most pristine property that we have right there on the waterfront. And we've got government offices and government facilities down there. And so there's a proposal before the county right now to move everything to Virginia Avenue and make that a government complex and bring these government buildings off of the waterfront and then develop that. It's the most beautiful land we have. And I would like to see Fort Pierce be able to do that, to really make it beautiful, to develop the port, develop the, you know, the front waterfront. And I think it would bring jobs. It would bring people in, and I think it would be very beneficial for the city and the county as well.
Okay, we have more questions from our audience, and let me read this. We'll be starting with Martha Hornsby. In the wake of overturning Roe versus Wade, the need for reproductive In the wake of overturning Roe v. Wade, the need for reproductive health services at the local level will increase. How will you work with county health department to increase availability of reproductive health services to low-income residents?
Well, it could possibly mean that we need to build more facilities, hire more people because they can't afford, you know, they're underprivileged, they can't afford the services. So I'd definitely be in support of helping them with that. It's something that's very needed and I would be supportive of it.
Okay, same question. Jamie Lee Fowler, how would you work with the local health department for reproductive services?
So what I would want to do is reach out to them and get a better understanding of what their challenges are or what they foresee them to be based on, you know, the overturning of that law and see, you know, how we can form a partnership so that we can help our community and those that need those services.
Okay, we have more questions from our audience and we read Florida is, we'll be coming back to Jamie Lee Fowler. Florida is at risk due to climate change. What policies or programs would you promote to fight climate change in St. Lucie County, Jamie Lee?
And I'm so sorry, Carol, could you repeat? My camera froze up for a second.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm so sorry.
Florida is at risk due to climate change. What policies or programs would you promote to fight climate change in St. Lucie County?
Sure. So again, I would want to work with environmentalists and see, take a look and see what their suggestions are. I know Florida recently, we have a lot of solar, which is awesome. I think we just installed like our million solar panel either a month or two ago. So we're definitely looking to diversify instead of just staying with, you know, regular what we're used to as far as the providing electricity to us. So I'd like to see what other clean ways we can move our utilities to so that we can help to keep St. Lucie County beautiful.
Okay, for Martha Hornsby, same question. What policies or programs would you promote to fight climate change in St. Lucie County?
Okay, well, I would be supportive of, first of all, moving the sewer plant. The city's in the process of getting the bond money. It's already passed and they're getting that set up to move the sewer facilities out further out west. And I think that's a good, good step in the right direction. We need to protect our waterways. We need to protect our beaches. And because we have so many people that love the beaches, the waterfront, I think that's a big part of the climate challenge. And I think that we're, the county's doing a good job on that right now.
Okay, we have come to the end of our questions from our audience and from the league. So it's time for closing statements and we come right back to Martha Hornsby, two minutes.
Well, as I said, I have thirty years of government experience working with the county on an absolutely daily basis, almost. I've interacted with the commissioners, with the county departments in the job that I had working with the Chief Financial Officer. I would like to bring my experience and my education to help the county. I'm pro-law enforcement. You'll never have to worry about me wanting to defund the police. I'm accessible. My cell phone number is on the back of my card. You can call me at any time. I will be financially accountable. I believe anyone who is elected to office has a duty to protect the taxpayers' money. And I will be committed to all citizens because we're all affected by the decisions that are made by the county commissioner. The things that I've mentioned are at the core of who I am. This is why I bring to the table as your representative. And I would appreciate the opportunity to represent you as a county commissioner. Please vote Martha Hornsby on August twenty-third. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now closing statement, Jamie Lee Fowler.
Yes, thank you. So from my twenty-three years of small business experience, civic engagement and long history here in the community, I know that with your vote, I can be our voice and will fight for our values. I will bring fiscal conservatism, common sense and accountability to our local government. My promise to you is that with your vote, I will work hard every day to make sure you know what your county commission does that affects you and your family. Please remember to vote Jamie Fowler, August twenty-third.
Thank you, both of you, for being with us tonight, for participating in the forum. We want to thank the league for developing the questions and the audience for adding to them. And then certainly thank everyone listening and watching for informing yourselves. Sabrina?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the legal women voters, we too thank Ms. Jamie Lee Fowler and Ms. Martha Hornsby for making time out of the busy schedules as they're campaigning and vying for your vote, the voting public. And thank you to the voting public for making time out of your busy schedules as well to listen and to hopefully learn a little bit more as you make these very important decisions as your lives are impacted on a daily basis. So without further ado, we say good night. Thank you for tuning in. And please don't forget, our own, our youth league is hosting a school board forum on Tuesday, August sixteenth at six P.M. We're very excited about it. It's the only youth organization that is doing so. And so thank you again. You always be safe, make the best decisions and do take care.